This land, this nation, into the nations of the world because you work with people. Do you be glory in the name of Jesus? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just for all.
It's 5:30 on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Roll Call, please. Here.
She's also absent. Rachel.
Here.
Ruffer.
Here.
Arness.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
No.
Here.
We have a quorum. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. We all have a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? If none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Rod. Second. Any discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign the motion carries. Under public hearings, we have a final cost hearing for public improvement 6068, Misk sidewalk driveway improvements.
Thank you, your honor, and good evening. Before you is narrative in regards to public improvement 6068, the 2016 sidewalk and driveway improvement program. This is 100% voluntary petition program by the city for pedestrian and concrete work and curb gutter throughout the city. Mail notices were sent out to all petitioned properties that were included in this last year's program. Locations are, this is designated throughout the city. The hearing date, which is set for today, interest rate for these improvements is four and a half percent. And the monetary threshold of the improvement of the sidewalk determines a variable year of this assessment. Enclosed in your packet, I have a breakdown, itemized breakdown of the total program costs, the assessed value, and the contribution from the city's levy that we currently contribute to keep this annual project. So at this time, I'd like you requesting open for a public hearing for any, to hear from any of the residents.
Thank you, Brian. And with that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please step forward. See no one, we'll close the hearing. It's back to the council for any discussion, and we ultimately will need a resolution to adopt the final cost hearing for public improvement 6068. Thank you, Darren.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffer. Any further discussion on the resolution? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. There are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we'll call on Finance Director Bill Sonmore to introduce Mike Heschen of Advanced Capital Group.
Thank you, your honor. Tonight, we have with us Mike Heschen from Advanced Capital, and he is a member of our investment committee. Here in Fergus Falls, we have an investment committee that's formed by our investment policy, and it's made up of the Chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee, the City Administrator, myself as the Finance Director, and Sandy Cunningham, our Assistant Finance Director. So we meet on a quarterly basis to review the investment performance. The investments are managed by Galliard Capital Management. They are a subsidiary of Wells Fargo. And then Advanced Capital Group kind of works as a watchdog in reporting on how they're doing, how their performance is doing, and gives us recommendations for what we should do with our investment policy and whatnot, and going forward in the future, providing advice to the city on that. So Mike is here tonight to give you kind of an annual snapshot of what 2016 looked like for us. We met briefly at 3:30 today, so he'll just go through that now, and we'll turn it over to Mike.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening. So once a year, we get together and I just review how the securities fund is doing, compare performance, look at compliance issues. So you've got, you should have some pages in front of you, and it's on the screens as well. First page shows the total balance of these funds is now $28 million, just short of $28 million. And it's growing nicely over time. As you probably know, interest rates are very low. So if you look at that page, you see the earnings on annual periods are shown below the blue line graph. So last year, earnings were $422,000. Recently, earnings have been low because interest rates have been low. The money in the fund has been very stable. $300,000 has come out in 2016. Last year, there was nothing. The second page, we compare the performance. We've hired an investment manager, Galliard Capital Management, to manage the investments according to the investment policy. And we compare their performance, as you see on page two, to indexes and other managers like them. Their performance is favorable for all these periods shown here. Again, pretty low numbers. With interest rates going up, these should probably improve over the near term. And then on page three is a reminder of the governance of how the different parties are involved here with these funds. We have an investment policy statement that describes how these funds should be invested. And sometimes there's questions about why these returns are so low. But it's governed by state statute, what you can invest in. And it's all very high-quality securities, which recently have low interest rates associated with them. The parties are involved in investment policy statement. The City Council, you're responsible for approving and adopting the investment policy, and then listening to me once a year. Thank you. The Investment Committee, as Bill mentioned, we meet quarterly and review the investment performance and look at any changes we might want to make. There's Advanced Capital Group, myself, that oversees this, and then Galliard as the investment manager. About four and a half years ago, we made a change to the investment policy statement that reduced the risks in the portfolio because interest rates at that point were very low, and there's potential for interest rates to go up and create losses with your securities. As interest rates are going up now, it's likely that during this next calendar year, we will recommend another policy change where we'd go back to a more neutral stance for interest rates to try to get more interest, more interest in the portfolio. So we're meeting, the next meeting, we'll be meeting with the investment manager, Galliard, and going over that decision and possibly making a recommendation to you after that. Lastly, on page four, it shows the investment policy compliance. The areas in the investment policy are summarized here that have to be followed, and everything passes the investment policy statement. Any questions?
Any questions for Mike or Bill?
I may have a couple comments, but...
Sure. Any questions from the council? Bill?
Couple comments for you. I won't go through this now unless you would want me to, but in your packet, actually, for the work session we just came out of, you have a list of cash balances because, okay, we have this investment portfolio, and we like to show you each year what funds those are invested in here in the city. So the general fund would have this much, debt service funds this much, the various enterprise funds. It's in your packet, and in the far-right column, I have comments there of what they're held for. And that's just for your information, and certainly any questions, let me know. But I know we went through that back a few months ago as well, too, for you, and got that out to you. So just pointing out that, that just gives you a little bit more information on how that money's allocated within the funds of the city, so...
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
Would you like a motion to accept this report, or is it just for informational purpose?
It's just for information.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
There is no open forum this evening. Under the consent agenda, we have a number of items on the consent agenda. You all have a copy of them on your desk, and they're also copied on the TV screen and on the board here. Is there any discussion, anyone want to discuss any of the items on the consent agenda in depth? Rod?
Number eight, your honor.
Eight? Okay. We'll pull number eight off the agenda. Anyone have anything else they'd like to talk about? If not, we'll look for a resolution.
Is this the one that's got the orders you were talking about for the change of the meetings?
No.
I can't find it on the sheet.
That's next.
Oh, it is. Okay, never mind.
It's under ordinances and resolutions.
It is, yeah. Thank you.
Any else? If not, there's a resolution?
Yeah, your honor, I'll make that.
Approving the consent agenda. Thank you, Justin.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Any other discussion? Now, roll call, please.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Arness.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda minus number eight is approved. Item number eight is a motion directing staff to present a plan for the removal of the building and awning at 10:40 East Fur Avenue, and to begin planning process, including obtaining cost estimates, or a trailhead to be installed at this location along with other possible locations. Rod?
My intent, your honor, is that we facilitate the two things that came out of Public Works. As you know, we do a lot of heavy lifting in that committee, and we work fast and hard. But in doing that, we ended up kind of with a motion that seems to have two parts to it. And we've been instructed by our council many times, we want to make sure we're clear in one thing. So in order to expedite what we did, I just would like to suggest that we look at this motion before us from the minutes, you know, we added an amendment to clarify this in Public Works, which is in your Public Works minutes, not, it's not here. So here's the point. If we can take the, if we can take the motion directing staff, the first part of this number eight, directing staff to present a plan for removal of the building and awning at that location as one clear and non-confusing motion, and then have another one that is really what the amendment is about, which is to consider this site along with others and get the input of all interested parties to be used as a north country trailhead site. Those interested parties, your honor, are listed in the discussion, Public Works, Glacial Edge Advisory, YMCA, Downtown Master Planning, Pedal Fergus Falls, and that would also include the newly formed Trail Town Group. Then we would have a comprehensive look at why this trailhead might be a good, really good idea there, you know, and so it isn't arguing against it, it's just making it clear. Does that make sense? Two motions.
It makes sense to me, and I guess, not to speak for Anthony, but I think he said something similar to that at the, if I understood him correctly, he said, maybe we utilize a task force to look at the second part that has some of those stakeholders.
We could. I just don't want to confuse it anymore. I know the staff wants to get at this and clean it up. Scott mentioned that calls he's gotten on this, and this would allow us to do both, I think, in the right order.
Any discussion on... So are you offering a motion, the first motion?
Actually, it'll be, the first motion would be then, the first part of that sentence, the motion directing staff to present a plan for the removal of the buildings and the awning at 10:40 East Fur Avenue, period.
Is there a second motion, Scott? Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Okay. Now, your second?
And the second motion is, is actually taken from the Public Works minutes. And so you have to dig in your packet if you want to find that, but basically, I'll just read it one more time. That is, to direct staff to consider this site along with others based on the input of all interested parties to be used as a north country trailhead site.
That's a motion from Rod, is there?
I'll second that one, too. Darren can.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on that? Second motion?
I'll second.
We got, we got a second. Rod and Scott are agreeing on everything here tonight. This is good.
Scary.
This is good. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. All right. Thank you for that, Rod. Under ordinances and resolutions. Item number one, we have a first reading of ordinance 557, repealing City Code 2.64 and amending City Code 2.51. City Attorney Rolf, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, your honor. To recall, like when we had our work session previously, we had some discussion about changing the meeting format to accommodate busy schedules, and it was difficult for people to always get to these committee meetings. And so basically, what you have before you is a proposal, basically to remove the two standing committees that you had, and to go to a committee of the whole style, which basically would be a regular council meeting at a, since we talked a little bit about location, we talked a little bit about time, and it was thought that, in talking with the mayor as well, that it may be beneficial to consider having a designated time and a designated place for these meetings to occur. And in doing so, we meet notice requirements the same way we would meet with notice requirements for our meetings of the council in here. And I think that's additional cost savings to consider as we don't have to provide a special notice for a special meeting. So before you is a proposed ordinance that I put together based upon our conversations. And if you're inclined to accept the consideration, I would offer it as a first reading. I do know that Scott had some comments about it, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And I just, one second. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background, too, that we discussed for the public. About a year ago, we went to our noon committee meetings in the hopes that it would improve attendance. And it hasn't improved attendance, improved attendance for either the council or the public. As Rolf mentioned, this would have, we'd have fewer meetings, but they'd hopefully be more productive meetings. Too many times, you know, we spend an hour on a Wednesday at noon, but two council members aren't able to be present. We get to the council meeting, we start the entire conversation over again, and it's just, it's not a productive use of anyone's time. And then also speaking with Andrew, just, I mean, if the council realizes how much time staff puts in on those committee days, it's going to be a significant savings in staff time to have it all as one. So I think we can be more productive, is my thoughts. And it's going to be a work in progress. We're going to have to, you know, some of the non-controversial consent-type agenda, do they come into the council, they come to the committee hall, those are things we can work through, but I'd like to see us give it a shot. I think we can be more productive. Scott?
My question is the time, at four o'clock. I'd like to move it to 4:30 to be respectful for everybody and their work schedules. And I think we can get everything done in 45 minutes to 15 minutes, you know, and get it to time to get back over here. And I just think it would be, try to start at 4:30, and if it doesn't work, I'll change it back to four or 4:15. I think the way it's been going with, we have a meeting go over an hour for quite some time now with, after the first takeover, when Rod took over, of course, the Public Works, it was so much nicer with him. But anyway, I just think we should go to 4:30.
Do we have a...
That's open to everybody expecting, you know, too.
Do we have a proposal for 4:30 or 4:15?
Was it 4:15 or 4:00? It was 4:00, but I'd just like to see it go at 4:30.
Well, I think we can definitely see if we can, if we put it at 4:30, we have to get everything done in 45 minutes. We should be able to, we should be able to get it done in 45 minutes. Everyone agreeable to trying that?
So someone should offer that with that notation and introduce the ordinance with the notation that you'd like it to read at 4:30?
Just a discussion, your honor.
Yes.
So let's say we make that change. If we're going to then change the time, we have to go through another reading, et cetera. And, you know, I mean, we have to announce it and go through a reading to change the time again if this is an ordinance for the time.
Yeah. Basically, you're introducing the ordinance at this time with that notation. The next council meeting would be the second reading, and you'll have that before you at that time with that amended. And we won't have to go through another reading beyond that. It's merely simply just introducing the ordinance at tonight's council meeting is what's necessary to keep it moving forward.
So my technicality maybe, but I'm just trying to come, you know, to do something here that might help us in the long run. Is it possible to word it, Rolf, so that we could say at the earliest four, but then Ben could call it at 4:15, and therefore, we wouldn't have to change anything if we have more on our agenda?
Yeah. The problem is the notice requirement, and then it turns it into a special meeting as opposed to another regular council meeting, and then we have different notice provisions we have, we would have to comply with. So, I mean, the point is, is that when you have a scheduled council meeting at a scheduled time, at a scheduled place, the notice that we provide, and we can ask Lynn a little bit about this, but the notice that we provide is just that. You got a, you got an ordinance in place and provides it, and she posts it. But if we're going to change the time, then that's a special meeting, and we got to comply with the special meeting, meeting notice requirements, which is a bit different.
One of the things we offer to the public is we send out a list of all the meetings that are offered through the year, and it would be really nice to have your time set so you're not changing it, and someone shows up at four, or it's 4:30, or 4:15, and misses things. So Rolf and I talked about this at length, and we really agree with having a set time, no matter what you set it at. Would it help with all of our posting requirements?
If I may, just to follow up on that question, I'm kind of trying the 4:30, I think, a whole lot more, even more accountable to move issues that we need to, but if we need to go to an earlier date, is that just then amending this and doing a first and second reading, or is it?
Yeah, it would be amending the ordinance, if we require another ordinance to amend it, but a first and second reading in the future, if you want.
But tonight, we can move to, we can do it to 4:30 tonight, just changing the future.
I'll make the recommendation for 4:30 and that first reading.
And introduces?
Introduce it, please.
Any other discussion? Okay. All right. It's been introduced. We'll have a second reading, and if there's any more thoughts or comments by next meeting, we can discuss that. Thank you, all. Item number two, resolution approving the environmental assessment worksheet and authorizing the distribution of the AW as mandated in regards to the utility tunnel removals at the Regional Treatment Center. We discussed this at our committee of the whole meeting prior to this council meeting. Brian, did you have anything to add on this?
No, I didn't. No seen.
Any comments or questions? Is there a resolution?
We'll offer the resolution, your honor.
Tom?
I'll second, your honor.
Thank you, Darren. Further discussion on the... Roll call, please.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Arness.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to approve changes in the fee schedule in April. Are you going to speak to this?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. In your council packet, there was a memo with the proposed changes to the plan review fee, plumbing, building, and mechanical and gas line fee structure. We changed our fee schedules about a year ago. We got a lot of feedback from our local contractors. So we just went through and cleaned up a lot of the fees and made it a little bit more self-explanatory when somebody has to bid a project.
Any questions in April?
I'd also like to make this effective April 1st, just for reporting reasons to this state for our surtax charges.
If there are no questions, do we have a resolution approving these changes to the fee schedule?
I'll close, your honor.
Thanks, Justin. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Arness.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. And finally, under ordinances and resolutions, we'll need a resolution to approve the purchase of a single-sort recycling truck. Guy Taylor, Public Works Director.
Thank you, your honor. I apologize I didn't get this in time for the committee meeting last week and got it on the agenda for tonight. But as we move forward with the single-sort recycling program, the timing is critical, and we need some action on this purchase tonight, if that's what you desire. But we need to purchase another one-armed truck for the single-sort recycling program. And we had at one point thought that we would refurbish a truck that was in the consent agenda, proved to be surplus and traded in. We thought that truck might be a good viable option for reuse and recycling, and turns out, the costs involved with that just are prohibitive. It just doesn't make sense to go through refurbishing a truck that we're going to end up with basically a used truck. So the recommendation is to purchase a 2018 Freightliner truck with a New Way refuse equipment. It'll be basically the same truck as what we was approved to order for refuse, but this was New Way refuse equipment, where that one is LeBree. The New Way system has been looked at by our maintenance staff down at the shop, and they, they just feel like it would be a piece of equipment that would be less cause for maintenance. There would be less issues there, so that's why we're proposing to go with New Way, less movable parts. The budget, money for this purchase would come from the 2017 equipment fund, and the amount is $213,344.44 purchased off the state contract from Olympic Sales.
Guy, any questions for Guy?
Guy, I got one. In our, in the last meeting, maybe I'm getting confused, but was there a truck we, are we going to trade in a truck on this one, or is that a different truck we already approved?
That was the one that was approved on the consent agenda. We're going to trade in a truck on that one, yeah. We got an 80, 80-some thousand dollars, yeah, trade-in.
So this is, we're paying full rate?
Yep, paying straight out.
Is there, is, there's no grant, this doesn't fall under the grant at all?
No. The grant that Otter Tail County was successful in procuring is for just the containers. And that was a significant grant for us. That saved us about $135,000, $140,000 by getting that.
Thanks to the county commissioners for that.
Yeah. I'm sure they had a hand in that.
Your honor, we can't give them all the credit. The solid waste department has been really good to work with and has been helpful in getting this all implemented, and certainly the county commissioners had to sign off on that.
Yep, definitely. As far as that program goes, we're going to be starting to meet more regularly just to nail down a schedule and how this whole thing will get implemented. And it's looking like it will be late July, maybe August implementation, depending on delivery of this truck.
Your honor, with all the comments, I'll, I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Justin. Second? Second by Rod. Any further discussion or questions of Guy? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $746,992.79. Copy those in your packet. If there's any questions, I'd ask to direct them to Bill Sonmore. If there are no questions, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a question. I had somebody ask me, you know, we spend 15 minutes debating $100,000, but we spend only five seconds, you know, on this, and I, I said it's because of Bill Sonmore and how astute he is. And is that true?
It is true, but I can't take all the credit for that either.
Yeah.
We have good department heads that review the, you know, their expenditures that fall into their area. Then they come into our accounts payable area. and they review to make sure things are proper. I have one other person in my department that, you know, checks their work. It's all the segregation of duties, so we do have a good system set up for it, so. You bet.
Thanks, thanks, Rod. Resolution, do we have a second to the resolution?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Darren, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under Board Committee and Department Reports, we will need a resolution of support for House File 544 and Senate File 400, which are the library sales, library project sales tax and also for House File 442 and Senate File 345, which relates to the extension of the RTC funding. Scott?
I'll second, Your Honor, thank you.
Darren, thank you. Any questions or comments, any discussion on these or those items?
Do we need them, Your Honor, if I, do we need them separated for any reason? Or can they be on the same?
They can be on the same.
Perfect.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is an update on the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan. However, Gordon, you're going to, okay.
Over two weeks ago, we had an open house. It was attended by over 100 people. Many arrived early and stayed for the full two hours. We've received a lot of input for the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan. Today, we began a design charrette or process. Today was a meeting with the consultants and the project management team. Tomorrow will be a second day of that process and the consultant will work through the day in the council chambers in preparation for what we call the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:30. So process is going well. They're getting to the point where we'll now see proposals probably within a month for initial proposals. That's it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Gordon?
Thanks.
Thanks, Gordon. Under old or unfinished business, there's a, item number one says dairy property update. There's really not much of a dairy property update. However, as we discussed at our committee meeting, I'm asking that we put together a task force to deliver some, a due diligence on the dairy property to gather the information that we need as a council to make a decision whether or not we're going to pursue going forward with the purchase agreement. I have put, thank you, Lynn. Do we have a list of the proposed members of the task force on your desk? If anyone has any questions? Feel free to ask them at this time. Scott?
I think it's a good task force. But I just want to ask the task force when they do meet to direct or vote on a, what do you want, what's the word I want to use at the?
Mission?
No, no, not, uh. The delegate or who's going to be the one that reports back to us, you know, what?
Spokesperson.
Chair.
Chair, I couldn't think of it, the chair. Sorry about that. Chair, chair's the person, so we know the chair is. So if we want to communicate with something with them, we can call the chair and ask them some questions instead of calling them.
All right, I'm pretty sure that, I'm just saying that Steve Erickson's going to be the chair as the one that spoke.
And I would recommend that, but after that meeting we had today, we've got a lot of information from Steve that we didn't know about and I would suggest that too.
Sure, so what will we, Steve, you're okay with that role? And I think what we would need is, we should have a resolution just accepting the formation of this task force and then just also setting, just accepting this task force, but then setting Andrew as the, as the point person to communicate with that task force as far as lines of communication, roles of the task force, you know, all those, all those details. Does that make sense, Andrew?
Can we call you a liaison?
No, no. Call him the?
You can call him Andy.
No, there's another name, no, don't, oh. Oh, boy. I want to offer that, Your Honor, and then, yeah. Ex officio, officio, whatever you call it.
This is our first task force that we're going to?
I'll offer that.
I'll second.
Second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right. Is there any new business coming for the council? If not?
Can I make an announcement, Your Honor?
Rod has an announcement for us. Yeah, go ahead, Rod.
Yeah, there, you will be seeing a link to a website or a survey on a date for an event that will be, be called Aqua Chautauqua. And it, you know, if you can't get into that name, you know, then something's wrong with you. That gets you moving. Aqua Chautauqua. But it's about, it's on and around in the Otter Tail River and it will be, you will be asked on this survey to choose a date that's most likely you would attend. So from, from early summer into the fall. So just, I encourage you to look at that and, and check, you know, check that date so we can plan. Some of the people, it's a, it's a regional task force planning this, not from the city council per se, but it'll involve the city. It would be, it'll be in Fergus Falls.
Thank you, Rod.
Will we get an email on that or how are we going to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send you the, I'll send you an email with it.
Your Honor, just a reminder too, and maybe Lee can speak to this, but this evening at the Government Services Center, the county has a open house for the transportation plan. And what's the other subject tonight?
We'll talk about solid waste. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that forward.
Solid waste, transportation plan and solid waste?
Yeah.
Please do, please do, Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council and the public at large, as we have them here tonight. The transportation plan, a little history on that. A little over a year and some ago, we put a comprehensive transportation plan together for the county and we had a committee of citizens involved in that. The plan was approved by the county, county board and it's, part of it is it'll have a regular review. And we're going to start that process tonight. There's several meetings on this, but we're going to start that tonight. Transportation affects our economics, our vacations, our tourism. There's a lot of, a lot of items that are affected by transportation and actually we're always short funding for our transportation. So we want to use the dollars as wisely as we can. And we really look for community input on this program. And we're having our meeting tonight, like we said. And then we also decided to include some topics from solid waste. And I don't know, have you picked your containers yet?
I think we have.
Green, right?
Bright orange.
I would just point out that there's something here that's really good for our community and that is if you've been watching the news, Fargo has decided to go to solid, single stream and they're charging their citizens $3 a container per week, month. There's a charge associated with it. And we're, as a community, city, county, we're not, we're going to be, we're going to be all right on that, so we won't be charging for that. So just a nice little net bit. Hey, we'd like to see it tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lee. Anything else? I guess the only other announcement, we have a Boy Scout in the crowd. Ben Sundberg, you want to stand up? Working on, at the council meeting as part of a project you're working on? All right, well, welcome. Glad you're here. Anything else coming for the council? All right, we're adjourned.